The audience, make sure everyone out there is rolling.
The only one's idea is wanting to expand, it stops.
Did we just sign on the new building?
It was council.
The one that brother group was together, not the multi-tiered one. No, this one was, it's a close vote, it was really close, but we ended up with this one.
It's gonna be easier to expand, I think.
I think it'll be easier to maintain, we don't have to worry about snow being up there so much. It's a little bit cheaper, which is good, because we're trying to stay in the budget, so.
Less splashing.
Yep. Anyway, whenever you guys are ready, we're good.
That's all the way. And so I start recording?
Yeah.
Okay.
No power?
Yep, again, we end up at ours. Just talk loud. Talk loud at the microphone.
Hold on, hold on, let me just, okay, now try this. I'm trying to get the quick switch.
Alright, July 20th, and we're calling the planning commission meeting in session. Let's see, so for our agenda for today, calling it to order. So we're gonna start out with the general plan, survey results, discussion.
Yes. Okay, so we got the survey results back. We had 148 responses, which I felt really good about, because I think we had about half that many last year. Great. So I felt like that was really a good number. We did talk about putting a reminder app on those screens, but that's about when we had the water crisis. And just as an update for everyone, the water crisis is over! We just got news that our back team result, the last testing we had to do, the new temporary pump came back. Negative results, so that's good. That means that we have, um, we have water in Francis again. Plenty of water, so outdoor water is back on. So, um, anyway, for the survey, um, yeah, we have 148 responses. It was a great response. I think a lot of people really liked the format of the survey, so that was great. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and flip over and show you some of the results. Let's see. So we have a pretty wide range of ages and household tags answered the survey. Uh, this one was how many people live in your household. The, the most common number was two, but it's kind of all over. And then what is your age, also a pretty broad range. No children, it's all adults, but, but that's pretty good. So we represented all groups in this. Okay. First thing that I wanted to cover was responses to the question, what do you appreciate most about your community? And so, for this one, I made a word cloud. Actually, SurveyMonkey made a word cloud for me of the responses. And so you can kind of see, one of the words that were, um, mentioned the most are the bigger ones. You can see what was mentioned the most, and then all the different things. So rural, small town, quiet, friendly people, sense of community, open space, farmland, and agricultural land. Beauty of valley, views, clean air, safety and low crime rate, access to lakes, mountains, and other amenities. So, when I read through that, I thought, yeah, that, that seems good. I, I agree with all of that, that makes sense to me. And then on this one, what two things would you like most, most like to change about your community? Quite a far, we heard a lot about growth and development, and this is a theme that I kind of continued throughout the survey. Slow down development and growth, more water availability in the summer, lower cost of water. On a secondary water system, improved street maintenance and repair of condos, more affordable housing, more trails and sidewalks, especially, um, trails, canvas, and we heard about a couple of few tires. They would like to see fewer children riding ATVs and dirt bikes. Got a lot of complaints about that. Wow, there's a lot of things. Hot lots around the neighborhood.
I know, good.
Yeah.
Could just be kids out playing.
Some of the kids like joy from their childhood.
It lets you know summer is, is here.
Kids are always like birds of the bees.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not everyone appreciates it the same way. Um, improved additional recreational facilities, better upkeep of parks. Some people mentioned they felt like our parks were overwhelmed with weeds. Uh, more retail, commercial grocery stores, restaurants. Prioritized commercial development of urban residential. Your quarry is zero speeding, your water is landscape and pretty developments. Um, heavy yards taken care of, reinforced loosens and jump ordinances, more police presence and speed enforcement. A couple of people suggested having a canvas by the police force, something we actually talked about a little bit before. Um, community cleanup dumpster day that the canvas does. So those were the things to change, uh, but really good feedback. Okay, so let's switch back to this one. So I, this, my analysis wasn't really in any specific order, but I did put rural up there because it was such a common theme. This graph shows it, the question is, well, considering the community's future, the issues we are most concerned about are, are number three. And this one, the huge red line, red or orange line is, um, unchecked growth. So, that was people's really primary concern. I think we had 70% of people checked that, so. Um, and then second was culinary water. I think part of that.
Could go together really hard.
They do go together in some ways. And I think with the water issue, we had the last week, we didn't have product survey results coming out last week. We're having outdoor watering ban, so that, that affected it, but it is something for us to keep in the forefront. We have this good feedback as well. Um, so let's just talk about growth for a little bit. And another question, 30% of respondents said that the growth rate is faster than they like. 55% said the growth rate is way too fast. So that is 85% of our city saying that we're growing too fast. We discussed that a little bit. Um, one question asked respondents to consider where new housing should be located. This was really interesting to me, so, uh, this was in developed areas that were around major streets, town centers. Basically within the city boundaries already. This is about 35% encouraged in those locations, but you can see a lot are discouraging it there as well, are strongly discouraging. The next question related was, how about we have new housing in undeveloped areas outside the current city limits? And wow, look at that. Uh, more than 50% of people are strongly discouraging that. So that tells me, if we do have to have growth, which we do, because, um, because it's coming, then we want to have it in the city limits. That's the preferred location, it's not ideal, nobody wants actually to change the growth. But if we do, then.
Keep, keep them in the open spaces.
Yeah, keep things on the outside, um, open as we can. This one has outside of our control, honestly. Uh, you've heard about the West Hills incorporation. That was an annexation, so there was, a developer approached us about the annexation, um, about a year ago. We said no, um, and then that developer and all some other landlords decided to try to incorporate right out, right on our boundaries, within our annexation declaration area. So there is an incorporation that's going, it's through the ballot, maybe this year, maybe next year. Because I thought it was with the governor right now. It is, it's with the lieutenant governor, so it's completely out of our hands, it's out of the county's hands. It goes to the lieutenant governor when you want to incorporate, start a new city. So in that case, we kind of had a chance, I guess you could say, to be part of the discussion about what happens right next to our city. And we said no, we didn't want to, we didn't want to be involved in that annexation, it wasn't the timing. And so they went, they're gonna do their own thing now. And now we have no control over it. And we'll see what happens. You have to always weigh those risks when you're thinking about development growth.
So is there any benefit to us not having any voice in that? I mean, by them not moving the city, is there any benefit to this?
There are some benefits, like you don't have to worry about providing the services. But we will fully attack of them living right next to us, depending on what they do. Depending on what they do, which I think will be pretty, pretty good, I mean, high growth, yeah. Anyway, so, something like that. It's, um, it's an undeveloped area, and we said no, but now it's out of our hands, and it's probably gonna happen at some point. And we can't really do anything about it, but we really don't want to see it happen, but unfortunately it does affect. Okay, uh, the next question related was about new housing in both developed and undeveloped areas. And this one, really only like 10% of people were supportive of that, so, um, most were discouraging or strongly discouraging it. Not quite as strongly though, as, as just an undeveloped area, so, interesting, interesting result there. So I guess that the lesser of the evils would be this one in developed areas. I guess, you know, one thing to make a think about is trying to focus growth in the city of the current city limits. And really making strict, very hard to attain standards for annexation. Maybe that's our, I don't know, I'll talk about it. Okay, um, so there are some of these. Another question was about housing costs, and that was a concern. It was, the graph I showed earlier, where you saw the growth as being a major one, and water.
Housing and affordability were the next top two.
Yeah, housing and affordability, and then also, um, there's another one that was type R3. But that was a top concern, which was surprising to me, and so, not surprising, but based on some of the other survey results, we'll talk about, I guess that was a little surprise. We'll talk about that in a minute, I'm heading myself here. Okay. And then people also said that, um, they're concerned about that, the community's future. Another question asked about the types of land uses people would like to see in Francis. The majority of respondents encourage or strongly encourage single-family housing, small retail, agriculture, and open space. Agriculture and open space, where 95% of people want to see those. Uh, 80% small retail, 87% are supportive of single-family housing. Um, I'm gonna have a graph for this one that I pulled up, they didn't want to show everything. Okay. Okay. And then neutral, was the light industrial manufacturing, people were pretty neutral about that. You had some people that wanted to see it, some people that did. But the majority of respondents discouraged or strongly discouraged multifamily housing, such as townhomes, apartments, large retailers such as grocery stores and national retailers. And then industrial or manufacturing uses. Those were all about 70%, 68%, 70%, 80%. Respondents want to discourage traditional subdivisions with large lot sizes. So 64% discouraged or strongly discouraged sliding. Okay. Yeah, they're discouraging traditional subdivisions slightly more than conservation subdivisions. Yeah, here we go, this is that one. So the question was, would you rather see like traditional subdivision, large lot sizes, no open space, or what we call is conservation subdivision, I didn't use that word, but small lot sizes required open space? And you can kind of see the, the graphs there, that, um, more people were strongly discouraging the lot, small lot sizes. But, I don't know, they're kind of about even. It was just slightly different. 64% discouraged or strongly discouraged, but large lot sizes, 61% discouraged or strongly discouraged, small lot sizes. So that was kind of a dilemma. I don't know, hard to opt for that. 62% of respondents want city to regulate short-term rentals to specific zones outside of neighborhoods. So like, no, no RDMPs or VRDOs in the neighborhood. 62% are supportive, and 84% want the city to adopt and enforce ordinances of protecting our dark skies. So we have adopted some ordinances for the dark skies, but we're not an official dark sky city. Maybe that's something we want to look at. Okay, the next thing to talk about is water. Um, we already said culinary water was the number two concern people had about the future. And 57% of respondents selected that. There was an outdoor watering ban that we talked about, um, so that might have kind of good results a little bit. And another question about water service, slightly less than half of respondents, 49%, were satisfied with water quality and availability. Almost 46% were dissatisfied. And I kind of wish I would have asked, we would have asked, how are we satisfied every year with water quality? And then water availability is two separate issues, and I think we would have seen, my, my promise was, is water quality is good, availability is what we're wanting to see more of. Then almost 36 were very dissatisfied, 36%, so that was huge. That's a lot of people that are very dissatisfied, and I think that does have to do with the outdoor watering thing. And, and the history of how we're doing that, how we're gonna do that in the last few summers. Many people commented that they would like the city to invest in a secondary water system. 61% of respondents support a tax increase for a secondary water system.
So I thought we had a secondary water system in the works.
We do, yeah, we do.
So is that just not communicated? Is that why you were reading that?
Well, it's a, that's probably part of it, but I think there, uh, so, so the heart subdivision and hidden meadows both have a secondary system as part of those developments. They're putting it in, in the property, in the meadow's property, that's where they're gonna have their support. They're a little fond for it. And that will go to those two neighborhoods that are designed to handle secondary water. Wild Willow, our largest neighborhood, Riverbluffs, they were not designed to have a secondary water system. So we put it in, we have to put it in on the infrastructure for that, so it would be a big investment. For Wild Willow and Riverbluffs, this is a green area, it's an area in the town. It's not heart or hidden meadow to have secondary water. So it's really good feedback, right, to know that most people in the city supported tax increases to make that happen. We'll have to get more information, how much that costs, so that would include heart crossing as well. Heart has it as one, heart has it, they have to have the water source for hidden meadows to put it in to the secondary water, but it's there, they just have to get the water into a secondary system. But it is built there in heart, it's built, it's gonna be built in the meadows. But also Wild Willow want to have it, and we're gonna have a secondary water pipeline for all of us.
So when we say secondary water, what do we mean by secondary water? Is it gray water, or is it?
It is water that you're not gonna want to drink. It's just for your yard, it's for outdoors, it's not.
I had it at my last resident.
It's way more cheaper, it's very, very affordable.
Can I say?
And you can use it whenever you want.
It's untreatable.
It's untreated.
But you pay extra for it, but it's worth it.
You pay a little bit less for it.
Yeah, it's a lot more affordable.
And so then, in the city, because we've got unlimited water, would we cash in some of our surface shares to buy the water for that? Or where would we be getting the water?
Not exactly sure how that would look. Scott will be able to answer that better. He's not very good because he's, he's worked a lot this week. He's into major overtime, and I said, no, because of your health. So, um, that is a really good question. I'm not exactly sure how, how it would work. I, we did talk about it once, I hesitated to answer it, but I think that, um, the shares that hidden meadows turning in, we could use for that. So the tap into it's definitely, we would use, they're a different source, a different type of irrigation company that will usually use canvas for access area. It's called People's Uplink. Right now we don't accept those water shares, but in the future we probably will be able to. And we will probably take the shares that they're giving us for hidden meadows, and put those into just using that as a secondary water. So it's had a several wells, it's not coordinated, it's treated differently. It's like irrigation water. But it is cheaper, once you get a system in. It's awesome. Yeah, I, I think that'd be a good thing. Okay, the next topic I talked about in my staff report was roads and snow plowing. 52% of respondents were dissatisfied, dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied with road conditions. And 74% would support a tax increase for improved road conditions. That was, the number one reason people were willing to increase taxes was to get better roads. So, interesting, yeah, yeah. We did do a tax increase a couple of years ago, to, um, an extra $50,000 in the city's budget to help with roads. And we should start seeing some of that this year. I know Scott said he has approved, I think, out towards the end of the summer. We usually have a hard time being on top of anyone's priority list, you know, the asphalt companies, because we're such a small city. So he usually tries to get on one there, and all the projects, so we usually see those type of road projects during the summer.
So we didn't spend it all on snow removal?
I'm sure we did.
The extra money?
There are different pots of money.
Oh, good.
Different pots. We did spend extra on snow removal this last year, because we kind of added a lot more salt and a lot of time to puddle roads. But the good news is that 91% of people in the city were satisfied, are very satisfied with the city's snow plowing. So that was one service in the city that, the number one service that people were satisfied with in the city. And they did a very job of that.
I thought you did.
You did an amazing job.
It's operated service in the city, so if you work on the roads, snow plowing, you're doing great. Just work on the roads a little bit more, which is, the roads are hard, because we're flying out contractors to kind of do all the projects.
Well, in the salt, so don't have to.
Yes, it is, we use that a lot in downtown. Why they're available, I guess, create something, so. Um, emergency response and law enforcement. 59% of respondents were satisfied, are very satisfied with law enforcement. 64% agreed or strongly agreed that they would support a tax increase for increased law enforcement. So I saw a lot of comments, people wanted to have more patrol, street enforcement around the city. Maybe that's something that'll attract a canvas, hopefully about, we want to do, maybe unify a police force for the canvas valley. And then 40% of respondents were satisfied, are very satisfied with the EMS, so not even really half entire response. I think this was more of the EMS, 30% marked, I don't know. So I'm guessing they're like, I've never had to call an ambulance in the fire department, I have no idea, but it's like, uh, several people commented that they do not want South Summit to share any of the service with Park City or someone. Even following their local news, you might know that that's been an issue with the North Summit fires, which kind of got taken over by Park City. And they're thinking they might have Park City do our ambulance service, there's some concerns with that.
But wasn't that because they're like, somebody had been quit, and then they hired somebody and half their force resigned?
Like, oh, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, well, and then I, so I know General Fisher.
Okay.
And so I kind of know a little bit about that. I mean, he's moved to Cali now, but it was pretty bad. It was, yeah, I think it was pretty bad for a while. I know that the mayor goes to meetings regularly to talk about this issue of the ambulance and the fire service. I think we'll be able to keep ourselves from the fire district, which is the way it is from what I've heard. The ambulance service might change. And there's people that would, that like, don't want to see that happen, they want to see it stay just here in the valley. If they don't want to pull from Park City, we need some vehicles, it's always a way, so. And that was this top service for which respondents supported a tax increase. So. Another one, where they, 73%, so they was, oh, 75%. So I said roads before, or, that was not true. Roads were 74. Up next, really close, was 75% support a tax increase for EMS, um, and fire response. That's good information that will pass on to the decision makers that are talking about this, like, we want to have our own fire district, or our own ambulance service, and looks like people are willing to pay for it, so. I don't know if that will go into our general plan, because we don't really handle that part, but it was good to get that information while we were doing the survey for other districts that are close by in the community. Okay, trails and sidewalks. Only 44% of respondents were satisfied, are very satisfied with sidewalk availability. How many do you want to give me of them? Just to guess. They're pretty much non-existent. But even though they were satisfied, they didn't want to pay, didn't really see a lot of support for a tax increase. It's gonna start the sidewalk network. So I think we're just gonna have to stay dissatisfied, because it's not enough to really support a tax increase. 67% of respondents want to see an expansion of these trail life network. And 65% said they would support a tax increase for trails, so that one, um, looks good. Like, maybe we need to put, as part of the elements we cover, maybe a recreation element or service element, we put it in trails. Maybe we think about, like, a trail in park fee for people that come into the city. When they pay their batteries for water, sewer, roads. Maybe we have a trail on park fee too, just so we can start building more trails. And several people requested a trail on us every two between Canvas and Francis. Um, we need to check in with the county, I talked to them at the beginning of the summer, and they said, oh yeah, we're working on it, and we're gonna keep bringing it towards Francis. But I haven't talked, heard anything, I haven't seen anything, so I'm gonna check in with them on that. Because the county is supposed to be there, but they have the money, they have the grant money for it.
The only reason they stopped was because they wanted to get the input of the public before they continued on. I'd gone to that.
Yeah.
And I'd been meeting, and they had the money, it was just a matter of where we wanted, they had several outlines to where to put it.
Yeah.
And how we wanted it to look and where to go.
I think they're not coming to go through Canvas, because there's already, like, sidewalks and suburban areas, and. And I talked to the county engineer, he was explaining that they might even just kind of skip Canvas for a little bit, because there already is infrastructure there, and then focus more on going towards Francis.
Hopefully.
That'd be great. My 10-year-old is like, mom, I wonder if I got to 7-Eleven, some of my friends are riding a 7-Eleven. No way. Or not. She was not riding on that road. No, sorry. Okay, yard conditions, nuisance enforcement, nuisance enforcement. Uh, 74% of us respondents were satisfied, are very satisfied with neighborhood housing and yard conditions. However, this was the other one that was kind of up there in the top three concerns, it was the number three, it's type of number three. Um, 24 identified as a concern, 24%. So, and then we're neutral about supporting a tax increase for it, so I don't think we're gonna like, try to go up higher. Code enforcement person, still just taking it, when someone complains, we'll all run out and check things out. See if anything major happening there, maybe we can think about it, but I don't think it would be the highest priority, since most people are satisfied and they don't really want to have a tax increase for it. They would, 61% said, so they would support community leadership if they decided to assess fines, if they wanted to start, you know, assessing fines for nuisance more. But they don't really want to pay extra to have a code enforcement person handle it all the time. 64% said they want the city to enforce nuisance ordinances, but they did junk in yards. Something we can keep working on, maybe, maybe we can think about, you're like, identifying a few similar properties, just to kind of like, try to get those into compliance, and then we can work on that.
I can only think of two, and I'm not even sure one is even in our boundary.
I can think of like a lot, but that's because I drive around the neighborhood like, oh, or around the city. I don't really, we don't enforce unless someone complains, but I see, just because I know the code. Yeah, I probably, we probably could work on this, it's just not my top priority right now. Okay, economic development and commercial businesses. 30% of people said they would like community leadership to work on creating economic development opportunities. Which we have going right here in the corner. We do have a few things aren't going in the commercial zone and on Main Street. We have a few things going, so, um, they don't want to support a tax increase for it. I think, I'm wondering if they realize that the city's budget would, boom, would be, would be really nice for the city's budget to have some commercial development. They want to see like some smaller retail, some restaurants, but that would But that would cost the city's budget as well. We'll keep working on it. I think we'll, I, I know that it's a priority for the city council because of the budget reasons to get some, some more tax revenue for it. So I think we will keep working on it, but.
Well, Santa Heights is probably going to be the first one, right?
I think it could be.
Is that going to be like small retail, like maybe a Pizza Hut or something in there?
I don't think it would be a Pizza Hut. At one point they were talking about having a Park City Roasters location in there and then, okay. We weren't really sure about the other piece yet. Now, we'll see. I did talk to a motel group today about potentially hiring hotels in Francis.
Really?
I can't give you any more information, but. I'm excited about it. I think it would be a good fit for the motel group to want to do, I think it would be a good fit. We'll see. We'll see how that happens or not. They tried to work with Canvas. Canvas was really hard to work with. Come to Francis, we'll, we'll try to get something going. It could be like snowball effect, just if we can get a hotel, then it'd be easier to get some restaurants too. Some other commercial, get kind of a cool Main Street going with Francis. I hate sending all my tax dollars to Canvas and leave or to City University. Okay. Seventy-one percent of respondents want the city to enforce architectural and design standards for commercial buildings. We have architectural design standards. I, I would like to have a group, that's not something I would like to look at. It's kind of on my list of things I want to look at. Because I think the standards to have now are very vague. And it's hard for commercial business to come in and look at what we have written down and come up with something that the council and planning commission actually like. It's just not, it's, it's just too open to interpretation and like needs to be really a.
Specific.
Specific, more specific. So I think we have to work with an architect or someone that actually understands that language because I don't.
Yeah, create pictures for the.
Pictures would be helpful.
Yeah, like this is what mountain looks like.
Exactly, like mountain land, not mountain design, well, this is mountain.
And then we.
Give us some pictures.
And then we build metal buildings like Gantistown. That part has me like totally lost.
It also says agricultural.
No, I mean, I understand that. I'm just saying like, pick a direction.
Yeah, and have pictures.
And have pictures and say, let's look like this.
I would love to do that for myself. They're lovely, but moving next.
I understand they're costly. Cost effective, but like is that.
We're trying to do this nice commercial area and you have this opportunity where we have actually created a commercial space that's not built. And this isn't the time to get in what we want, to have it look nice. Yeah. Just my concerns. Seventy percent of people want separate commercial and residential land pieces. Parks and Rec, sixty-seven percent are satisfied or very satisfied with the city's recreation facilities. They're neutral in increasing taxes. I don't see too many changes there. We do have quite a few hard problems as you're all aware of, the last one, and it works. Sixty-nine percent are satisfied or very satisfied with community facilities, which is lovely, City Building, City Hall.
Seven Bar Little Co.
But we are, you know, we're down that. And seventy-four percent were satisfied, very satisfied with the community and that's one more series. I would like to bring back the bonfire. That's something that.
Well, we did, we have it this year.
Well, because the, the local boards from, you know, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints were the ones doing it. So Francis' second board was the leadership on it and Francis' first would help. But then they decided they didn't want to do it this year, so I feel like maybe the city needs to just take off.
Yeah, so it's such a great event.
Yeah. Did you ever go to the bonfire? I think you missed the bonfire.
I missed it.
Did you ever go to the bonfire? I don't know what it is.
I missed it, but I saw the info and I'm in.
It was something.
Well, we're letting people have a fire. He doesn't want to be a.
Right? It was really fun. It was fun.
If you want to be warm in the middle of December, the bonfire.
Soup and a fire, I believe is.
Yeah.
Out with soul.
The high school band came out and they played some songs. It was. It was fun.
It was fun. Okay, that's pretty much it for my staff report. There's no motion we have to make tonight. We can just discuss this however you guys want to, if you want to just kind of. You got the summary, you had, I did give you all the results. If you, you wanted to look through it all, read all the comments. There are some really good comments up there. I was grateful we got to do a great turnout in the survey.
They're in our iPad or.
It should be in Dropbox. Yeah. Let me know if you didn't see it, but it should be in Dropbox.
I see the comments. So I guess where do we?
Want to talk about growth first?
Yeah, so how do we? How, I mean, it's pretty obvious that nobody wants to grow. How do we slow or inhibit that or?
We can put that in our plan, can't we, to make sure we don't ever have like high density, that. Like there's a surface manage per acre that we're not going to go above.
There's a few things that I think we could do. There's some things that are out of our control and there's some things that we can't control. When we're talking about growth, the tools we have in our toolbox are annexation and zoning. Those are the things that we can use. So right now, we have, we do have like a multi-family zone. We've only used it in one area. We could think about making that not available to people anymore. We could take that off the table. If we felt like that was the right choice. Survey, most people that live here don't want to see a multi-family zone. So maybe that's something we think about taking out. If someone comes into the city and they, they're in the city limits, they have property in the city limits. And they look at the zoning map and it says, okay, you're in a residential half zone here, and they want to build residential half blocks. Guess what they get to deal with? There's nothing we can say. If our zoning map matches what they want to do. And they're in the city, then, then they get, as long as they do everything right through the checklist process. Then it's, they get to deal with. So there's nothing we can do to stop that. Unless we wanted to look at rezoning things. I don't know that that's really the right answer because, because you know that growth is coming and we. I feel like, I talked to the county this week. I had a meeting with the county and we talked about all this, all this growth and. And everything's coming in. And not surprising that all the people in Park City and Southern Mill Basin, they're saying, we are full. We don't have any more room to grow. So everyone that comes in needs to go over there on the east side. And of course, all of us on the east side are saying, oh, no, 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 we don't want your, we don't want to become Park City. We don't want to be the veteran community for Park City. We don't want to have your workforce housing here. We want our own community.
Growth is inevitable. Well, but South Summit just had an open house meeting last week on Wednesday where they talked about development. And they have three huge developments going in, in the city. That will probably total like five hundred and fifty homes, apartments, whatever. So, and they have the roof ward. They're tearing stuff down to put the stuff in. The problem is they're not letting it happen, like Robertson Flats and the area out there by Snyderville. Where they're trying to get that development to go.
Yeah, all of Utah, it's not just the, someone kind of, every, every, almost everywhere. Has this issue right now. Housing is really expensive. There's kind of a shortage of housing. And I know, like personally, I bought my house five years ago. I could not afford to move back here. It's kind of crazy. I am torn. Honestly, I've been torn. Because on the one hand, I go to Francis because I, I like the way they went and wanted to change. And I want to keep the community rule. I want to keep this really great community feeling that we have here. What people are commenting about. On the other hand. I know the growth is coming and I want to plan for it. And I want to do what we can to be proactive. I don't want to stick our head in the sand like it's not coming. And then we kind of cut off art and have another West Hills incorporation where we actually don't have any state on it.
Well, I think the other problem is when, I think when people think of growth here, they don't think of Francis City because our boundaries are like a Jacobus.
Yeah.
And they, they think of the whole valley. And so I think in the sense that we say our solution to matching what people are telling you in the survey is to not annex land. We're actually doing the opposite of what they want. And we're, we're limiting their representation. We're limiting their ability to have participation in the growth. And I think if anything, we should be thinking about how we can collaborate with neighboring cities to come up with some kind of cohesive plan for the valley as much as possible because. Because so much of the land is outside of the cities and that's where most of the growth is going to occur. And I, I think somehow we need to be realistic with. You know, with what's going to happen and find a way to make it a good community as opposed to. Trying to prevent the growth from happening and have people skirt the city and end up with a chaotic disaster.
That's, that's my, yeah, I agree. And just finally write down, so allowing growth to occur, planning for it, being proactive. But then making sure it's at a rate that we can handle it, we can provide services. That balance is tricky.
Well, some of it's a blessing that interest rates are high.
Yeah, that is definitely really slowed things down because for a while I was thinking, this thing's going to double in five years. I'm not, I'm still worried about that now. Yeah.
I think, you know, if it's, if the, the goal is to slow growth rather than packing houses in and multi-family has been. I mean, it's pretty clear it's around multi-family, if I'm remembering right. Then I think, you know, the goal would be to create as many spaces similar to the development we all live in that are half to full acre and. Choose up more of the, the land. I said we have one multi-family, but, you know. I think if we would have taken that in cooperation, then, you know, can we make it even larger on the hill because of the next kind of policy or whatever the case may be. And then then control it. So, you know, I think it's in line with our maintaining our agricultural field to continue to say lots should be. Acre, two acres, whatever the case may be. Because the whole valley is split up, looks like in ten acre chunks. Back in the days, I mean, if we stick to that theme, we wouldn't minimize housing impact.
Yeah, so one thing I want to do probably in the next meeting is to bring the future land use map in. And to look at where we are and see if we want to change anything based on. On this discussion, on these results, if there's any futures, if only we want to change, or even current zoning, we can start. Planning, start a general plan, maybe make some zone changes if it felt like they were appropriate to make those changes. I mean, that's a great idea. So we'll talk about that one night's time. I am worried though, like. In Utah, affordable housing has been a very hot topic. And the state legislature has done things with other communities to force the issue and to require. But they're, the plan for moderate income housing, not low income, but moderate income housing. And I, at some point Francis will have to tackle that when we get to a population of five thousand, we'll require to move that into our general plan. We don't have to worry about it now. But I am a little bit, you know, I kind of want to, I don't want to totally forget about affordable housing either. Because I, I think. This is what I talked to the county about is, we think about like, what do we want the city to be like, what people appreciate it now, it's that it's community. That you have, you have your teachers, you know, there is your neighborhood. That there's all different kinds of people in the community. My concern is that if we just do like acre lots. It's going to turn into more like a vacation community or a victory ranch. Our people that actually like, so they may have work here, won't be able to afford it. So, but I do want to keep, I want to keep that kind of new though. So that's something else I've been thinking about is how do we. Keep these large lasting sizes that people want to see, but they're just not affordable and it's, I don't know that it can come out. There's so many, like, honestly, I feel like I'm on the fence on everything because I can see most sizes, but it's so hard.
So what do we call the developments where we have smaller lots with more open space?
That's called the conservation subdivision.
So are those better for affordability or does the open space make them also a bit more affordable?
You know, they are a little bit more affordable, especially if they have the townhomes, but even the townhomes. I was really surprised how much the townhomes are costing. They're not.
They're seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes. That's, I don't think that's affordable.
It's not.
My house, the, that I bought five years ago was, was kind of less than that.
So, but if you look at the valley as a whole, like Oakley only had like, they only allowed like thirty-five million permits in Oakley. And then they've got a new mayor and I think he might change that. And then really the only growth that's really happening in Canvas is in High Star. So as far as growth goes, it's all in Francis. You know, because we've got the heart crossing, we've got Hidden Meadows coming, the Stewart or Smith.
Stewart Ranches.
And then the one up on the hill.
What they have is.
This acreage over here that's off of Highway thirty-two. I mean, we're exploding compared to the other cities. And I don't know about Woodland, but I don't think PO is growing. At all.
No, because they're not incorporated, so they don't have the services that we have. So they're, they're in county's jurisdiction, which is much, much more. Land prepared for house, so lower, low, low density.
And West Hills houses, that's going to be an explosion. They're going to be best of like. I think I heard like sixteen hundred homes, just homes. We have, we have about six hundred houses in Francis.
Well, and so realistically, just going back to water, so West Hills, I mean presumably they don't have water rights there because that was never.
Well, the county do have some water because if people are using it for agriculture, they can.
So have they got the West Hills though?
I don't know. I don't know all the details of West Hills. I don't know what water they have or don't have, but I'm guessing they do have irrigation water, that they can turn into a water area.
Okay, because my question was going to be, are they going to come to us and say, hey, can we buy water from you all? And are we going to end up providing the same services we would have anyways? Just set a fee.
I think we would say no. We have, you know, we just want to provide service to our city. Actually, interestingly enough though, the developers that came to us that wanted us to annex them, we said no. They said, okay, we're going to do this West Hill today. It's going to take a long time for them to get all their structure in, for us to be actually built. So we'll be in West Hills, but can we just tap into your water system? No, we're not going to provide that service to you if you're not in the city. We do do it for a few people that, and it's not like a, a whole subdivision. We have like one or two here, one or two there that are on the border of Francis. And the reason for that is we would rather have them use a pay for our municipal water than have a septic system. Or a well right next to our, you know, area. We don't want the septic system right next to us or the, we don't want to do the well or our well, so that's why. Makes our systems. So, yeah, these are great questions. This is, growth is a really tough topic and, yeah.
I haven't looked at the map, so I'm a little bit out, but I mean, is there a way, obviously Canvas has apartments on the south end. Can we put it all together?
Yeah, I mean, we could look at that. We could look at rezoning an area to the multi-family. It felt like it was appropriate right next to Canvas.
I mean, that's what, that's what they did.
Yeah, so when Kim was talking about all the new developments coming in, you were absolutely right. And those were all annexations. All of those, every single one of those was an annexation. Heart, Hidden Meadows, Stewart Ranches, but it has a Francis Gate. But it has a Francis Gate, it's twenty years old, but it wasn't annexation twenty years ago. So I kind of feel like if we just really focus on what's in our boundaries right now, maybe that's where we can go.
So, but if I'm outside the boundaries and I want to develop, I mean, so we know you can pull West Hills and you can incorporate. What are the limits to that? How, how many, how big do they need to be for that you can incorporate?
They have to have a hundred people that can vote in an election.
Okay, so that's a pretty good threshold.
Yeah, and they have to do a feasibility study showing that they actually have the resources to hold together the city. So that's what they're doing right now with us, is this feasibility study. But it's out of our hands and it's out of the county's hands at that point. So I do want to focus on the city and the boundaries. There's always that West Hills and thing going on too.
I just think for us, the ship sailed on West Hill. It's like we, we passed that. So I think you're right.
Potentially. I, I'm not sure that, I think the incorporation, they have to get a hundred, they have a hundred-ish voters out there. And that includes a lot of people that are kind of in the. Community. There's a little like neighborhood that's between. community. There's a little like neighborhood that's between, it's on a Democrat alley. You know, where Tom's down south. A lot of those people are going to have to vote, be the voters, that more dense area. They're going to be the people voting on this. I don't wonder if they're going to want to see right out their backyard sixteen hundred homes. So I'm kind of wondering if it's even going to get up really good. They're not going away. These people will find a way to build one way or another. Maybe eventually looking back. We're playing a waiting game right now to see what's going to happen with that. Alright, so for growth, I'm going to bring the land to you on this map next time. That would be kind of the focus of what we do. What priorities or what goals do you think we should tie in for the general plan? I know some of the high things were like, all growth obviously, but water, roads.
Well, I mean, I think when we already touched on this, making sure that the zoning makes sense and is somewhat aligned with those objectives.
Yeah.
And I think we just talked about, you know, what have we wanted to look like in terms of a business? Downtown structure, like let's get that. Let's get that put in, in place so that I think it's not nearly as loose that way as we can get more commercial and have that opportunity that it's, that's not, it's not either or. It's like, this is what we want it to look like. This is an extreme example, but like I think about Leavenworth, Washington, or think about Sisters, Oregon. Pretty extreme examples, but, um, something similar where it's very uniform.
Maybe another question. So people don't want high density housing or multifamily housing. What about like mixed use housing? I mean, I don't think we have any questions directed at that. If we had, you know, push or encourage mixed use in our business in the commercial areas. Would that be a way to get lower price housing also?
Yeah, so we do have one area, we set it down, it's coming right by this former stuff. It allows people to understand development. It's not pretty popular with developers. They've been excited about that. Say, we should have put it on the survey. We did put it on the survey and I would have liked to ask you back on it, but just.
Same economy just mixed use.
So the run of it is a mixed use.
What about that property that's for sale that's on the west side of Highway thirty-five? Is that some commercial or is that residential?
One on the west side of thirty-five.
Or thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
It's kind of like cornered.
It's not the corner, it's.
It's a square one. Yeah.
It's kind of like anything, some homes, but it's like ten acres.
Yeah, I mean, just north of, I think it's five, but just north of the, um, Chirney and Wild Billow. On the other side of Chirney.
I just know.
Yeah, I think it's commercial. I think it's just.
It's not commercial or I'm worried too, like there's a strip on your side of thirty-two that's mostly commercial. Okay.
Um, and then the water thing seems to be a popular thing in the survey that I just wanted to touch on briefly. I, I saw the article that came out.
I don't know about you, but it's, I'm too crazy.
And I think like immediately I was like, well, that's painting a pretty broad brush of the water image. Like it said nothing about how they're clean anywhere in it. And so I just wonder like, by doing some of the things that we've done, which I have even included in, like, are we sending the wrong message? Like it's really an infrastructure issue as opposed to an availability issue. We're just being prudent about the availability of it, but that seems to be spreading the wrong message with everyone else. Because it just became like a huge topic tied to grandma's switch.
It's not really, it's really not related to growth. I mean, it kind of is. So I'll just, so we're on the same page. Francis has three wells. We have, um, Francis well, which you've probably seen more of, it's thirty-five down here. That's our primary one at this point, uh, the oldest one. And there's a tank there. We have a well in the Woodland Hills subdivision. We share with Woodland Hills. We have a fifty-one percent interest in it. It's part of what's called the Woodland Hills Water Company. Francis has a fifty-one percent interest. Their neighborhood, neighborhood has a forty-nine percent. So we're tied to them with that well and that tank. And that's why you saw the signs of Woodland Hills, because that neighborhood was also affected. So, and then we have Stewart Ranches where we got a new well in, have a new well, and we're building a tank right now. And that's really the problem that we've come up, we've had, I'd say the primary problem is Stewart Ranches. Um, the well is ready to go and where we're building the tank, we didn't have a permanent pump in yet. So if you heard the word like temporary pump in, that's where it was going into Stewart Ranches. They had a temporary pump that they put in last summer. And that was, we have a little watering ban last summer. Like we did this summer. That was when they were hurrying to try to get a temporary pump in. The same thing happened again this summer. From whatever from Public Works, they've been trying to work on getting a temporary pump in there, knowing that this was coming, that it would get hot and people would want to use water. So they've been trying to get a temporary pump in. They said that they're bottom of everyone's priority list and it was hard to get somebody out here to get, to get the temporary pump in. And we hit these more like emergency restrictions. That helps put it on top of the list. But, um, that's one of my concerns is, why didn't we get this in sooner? I knew it was coming. So that is in now. The temporary pump is in. When the tank is done, we will get a permanent pump there and that's supposed to happen this fall. When Stewart Ranches, well, a tank, a pump, everything, that whole system is up and running, I think our water problems will probably not be happening anymore. So hopefully this fall will not have this problem ever again.
So when I moved in in twenty twenty, we were talking about the pump then.
Yes. At that, at that point, we were getting the well in. And then it was like, okay, we're going to, the first piece was the well. We got the well. The well was a big well. We had to do the testing. It was a good well. We could do temporary pumping. We would have a place to store the water nearby. We could start in Francis well or the Woodland Hills well, but without storage, the well's always so good. We had to get more money from annexation fees. We had to get those paid to the opening for the tank. So the tank is getting constructed right now. It's like, kind of, you have to think of it as a whole package. You need the well, the tank, and the pump to really have a system. So.
So it's really going to be done this year?
That's what I've heard. I mean, I am not on the front lines of this, but that's what I've heard. So I hope so. I really hope so. Once we get the Stewart Ranches system up and going permanently, then from what I've heard, our water problems will be fine. We have, we have enough water. We have plenty of water in the wells from what I've heard. Plenty of water, just getting it out, getting it out to people and having storage to save up for, you know, be able to pump through the night and fill up our tank and then have it, you know, go out to use all during the day.
So does a secondary water system help address these issues or because we kept having another well, another pump, does it not really address these issues?
Um, it kind of does. It kind of doesn't. It, it just changes the landscape and it makes it a little bit more affordable for water.
Okay.
Because we're not having to treat it.
Right.
But I think some people need to understand about several, I didn't know this. I just found out about it a little while ago, that the secondary system that they're kind of losing relies on irrigation water. So if we have a really bad water here, then that's.
There's no irrigation water.
There's not much irrigation water and, and there's only irrigation water for so long. So if you get to the end of the summer, you might not have irrigation water.
If we can get through the hottest month of the year, then it's worth it. Yeah.
I think overall it's a good thing because it takes some pressure out of the culinary system. Any other thoughts on anything else? I think those are some good things to focus on. Um.
I think the only other thing in the general plan was the trails, right?
Yeah, trails.
It was growth, dark skies, roads, trails, water. Sorry, that's all out of order, Rob.
No, it doesn't matter. You know, then, no, I think that, those are probably the things that we could focus on the most.
So water seems to be mostly an education piece and that might just have been our messaging.
It could be, yeah. I think that's something we could work on. And maybe we put in the general plan that what the city goals for us to be more transparent or have better communication with the residents, so that people understand what's happening.
I just, yeah, I hate to see us get attached to a different agenda with water that isn't necessarily relevant to our situation.
Because it's a missed growth.
Yeah.
We don't have water.
Well, maybe I won't build one out there. Or bring in Dollar Tree or whatever the case may be, like.
I really hope not.
Or is it Dollar, who's the one that builds in all the small, Dollar General?
We used to have, I think before you guys moved here, we used to have a store right by Ace.
I know it was Dollar Tree because when I was given, they were, they were done.
It was, there's something a dollar. It wasn't the like dollar store.
It was not the dollar store.
It was something like that. It wasn't like the one where it was a dollar. It was like three dollars or five dollars.
Yeah, five below or something.
No, it was different than that.
Well, nonetheless, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm thinking, I've wondered about, you know, just is it after seeing the map where we allegedly have trails. It seems like we actually don't have trails any of those places, even though we officially have trails.
Yeah.
Is that something that we could do relatively cheaply to show progresses? You know, so like I think there's supposed to be trail along the Lambert Cut Off Canal. And there's a fence up there saying it's private property of the water company. And, right, there's certain areas where if, if we have trails, I mean, if we at least have access and we can point, people say, hey, there's a trail there. There's, it's a very least a trail that sign, right?
Yeah, or just making sure that there's access, if there's supposed to be access, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point. So maybe we can look at trail maps within the city. I have my own like city version, but I'd love to see, you know, some of the trail forest versions or the versions, see what they show.
And, and I was coming to be mostly based off of the city version that I saw. I was going through trying to find those trail friends. I thought, we should, it's a fast track there.
Yeah, we should check that trail map out and update it. And we do, we have a work with the Trail Foundation, the Subs and Trail Foundation. And they're, they got some grant money to fix the hilltop trail that runs behind the river. There's actually a trail along hilltop. It's hard to see. There's a lot of weeds there now. But they do get money to fix it, so. I bet I should have written that for my mom. But it's not very long.
It's not very long, I'm sure.
It is short.
That's Bayou Park.
It's a, it's a portion of the town.
There's more trail in the Bayou Park? Huh, and there it goes back towards the canal.
Kind of gravel. It needs to, it needs, it needs some attention and love. We had a battle with the HOA over it and they were. Yeah, we thought, we thought the development had said they were responsible. They thought it said, we are responsible. And, um, after several years of just arguing over it, we decided, no, we're just going to work with the Trail Foundation and try to get it fixed and then we'll take care of it.
I haven't even looked at the map, so this might make a question. Is there any way to connect that part?
Well, that's the plan. That's what we've been working with Trail Foundation on and they're going to help get more grant money in to connect all these little pieces so that you can actually go on a bike ride or a walk. And reconstruct it. Yes.
Around the loop.
That's the plan.
Oh, man, look out.
But you know what, next year or like quite a little timeframe is, it's like a little piece this year, another piece that year. It's more, there's no time frame set to it, but, but maybe we should have something. Maybe that's something we should look at. Yeah.
So that we can say this is what's coming.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, the date.
Yeah.
By such and such date, this is our goal.
On Lambert, I was walking on Lambert the other day. I'm like, oh, we missed a huge opportunity here. I wasn't involved in the city when that was being planned out so much, but really should have had a sandlot or a trail on the side of Lambert because it is not anywhere you want to walk anywhere.
Right.
We should have it connected there. So, something like that. I want all of us, like, that's why I have this plan in condition is so that when we look at a subdivision or something that's coming in, we're going to say, okay, don't forget the trail on the front. This is an important piece of our trail network. We want to have that there.
Well, I think, yeah, where it makes sense, we need to connect it, right? So apartments and connect Wild Billow, which needs to connect to River Block, which needs to cross the street to whatever that one is.
Some things to connect to this trail, so we have Canvas.
Yeah, which needs to hit that SR thirty-two trail.
Yeah.
And then I don't even know the subdivision that's on the east side of like kind of across from Wild Billow that's, looks like it was approved but never started. Is that?
Oh, Circle T. That was approved twenty years ago. And they started their reconstruction order in twenty eighteen. They've all grown bankrupt and.
There it is.
I actually talked to the landlord today. He's trying to sell it. And he said he's had some interest in it, but, you know, the bar has changed a little. Yeah. Any other thoughts or anything else before we shut people there?
I thought that list was good.
Yeah, but I think we have a good game plan for progress.
Yeah, so, good. Alright, well, that's it for me then. Probably move on to my side of the jury.
What is the next time?
Oh, wow, let me pull that up.
The June?
You can take a calendar update.
Oh.
Which.
I thought that's what it is.
Spoiler alert, there's not much to update going on. Frontier Days is coming up and we would love if you could help all of us here for that. It's Labor Day weekend, Friday through Monday. We have a couple rodeos, we have a movie night, we have a concert. It's a fun time and I, we need volunteers. So please contact me if you're interested in helping. I don't have any other things else to update you on. Next month, it looks like there could be a good meeting or there could not be any, maybe not. I have a few balls up in the air. We'll just see where those are going. We could be talking with the Rock and Meadows next one. They are very much on the border, like, being able to make the meeting cut off here or not. I'm making one next week and we'll see where they're at. The water conservation code that we talked about last time, I've been trying really hard to get in contact with the state agency that's supposed to be helping one of us with the ordinance and they have not called me back. Just I'll keep working on that. I think that's about it. So if you guys have questions for me.
Alright, we're ready to adjourn then. Alright, and the meeting's adjourned.
Awesome. You guys have a great one weekend.
Will there be a concert that Friday night?
There are, there is, yeah. There's a concert. It's the same people we had last year, Fred and Andy Nelson, that is a very casual type of concert, but it, it's fun. You know, it's really fun.
We need to find the race.